So I'm calling to order this Planning Commission meeting at 6:00 on August 17, 2021. Please join me in standing to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our next item is the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, roll call, I believe.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Painter, could you please call roll?
Yes.
Member friend. Vice Chair Godberry.
Here.
Member Keeney.
Here.
Member List.
Here.
Record reflects that Chair Lepper is not here this evening.
So moving on, our next item is the consent calendar.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Is that for just the agenda or the consent?
The agenda and the meeting minutes.
I will abstain since I can't approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting, so I abstain.
Okay, so one abstention by Member Keeney and everybody else here who is yes. So moving on to items of interest to the public, we have no members of the public in our audience tonight, so I think I will move on from that item. Communications, Mr. Painter, do we have any communications?
We have no communications that are not in your packet tonight.
Okay. So moving on then to our public hearings, we have our draft 2021 through 2029, housing element update, general plan amendment. Is there a staff report on this item?
Yes, there is, and also, as I mentioned to some of the members earlier, we do have some of the documents that we can bring up as needed if you wanted to look at a particular page or discuss a particular aspect of not only the housing element draft but the addendum and the letter from HCD. So tonight you're being asked to conduct a public hearing to receive public comments on the city-initiated amendment to the general plan, and once again, this is called the draft 2021-2029 housing element update. You're also asked to consider that public comment received, then make findings, and then forward a recommendation by minute order to the City Council on the housing element update, as well as the addendum that staff's prepared for the update, which is an addendum to the 2013-2021 housing element negative declaration. Once again, this addendum would address the housing element before you this evening, the 2021-2029 housing element. Due to the lack of public in the audience tonight, I'm gonna skip over the basics of why we're here, but in general, the city has a general plan in which is the guiding document that all development within the city, as well as other functions of the city, work under. One of those elements is the housing element, which is a mandatory element under state law. Per state law, the city's housing element must be updated every eight years, and in order for the city to remain on that eight-year update cycle and to avoid having to update the housing element every four years, the City Council must adopt a housing element update by September 12 next month for the sixth cycle, which once again is the 2021 to 2029 planning period. All housing elements within the state must be sent to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, otherwise known as HCD, for their certification. And what a certification or certified housing element does for the city is that it may allow the city to be eligible for future state funding for a variety and various community development purposes, grant monies. The organization of the element before you tonight is, mimics, and follows the framework organization of the general plan itself. So there really are two components of the general plan, a policy document where goals and policies and implementation programs are placed, and then the background report or background document where the information that is placed regarding how we derive the goals and policies and the direction the city's moving forward with its implementation. So all the background material, all the data, and the analysis of where we were and where we're going and going forward from here. The main component of the housing element in terms of the city's responsibility is what's called its RENA, or is Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And that is derived out of SACOG, which is the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. They are by statute required to develop a plan, a regional housing needs plan, for all the jurisdictions within the SACOG region. And then, out of that plan, there is a certain quantity of housing that our jurisdiction needs to plan for over the next eight years. That information was provided in the staff report, and a total of 259 units are programmed for us to plan for. And plan for in this context means to not only provide physical land area to accommodate those units, but also, in the housing element itself, there are requirements to reduce constraints to the development of this type of housing, to serve the various income levels, also to remove and lower and try to facilitate the additional housing that the city needs to plan for for the next eight years. The RENA breakdown of those 259 units, 56 are required to be planned for the very low-income category, which is the income levels that are less than 50% of the counties, El Dorado County's median income. 34 units for the low-income category. Low income in this case means 51% to 80% of the county's median income. 50 units for the moderate income category, and that span is 81% to 120% of the county's median income. And the upper, or excuse me, above moderate income category, we need to plan for 119 units. So on pages four and five of the staff report provides the summary of that RENA numbers, and this is a reduction from the previous eight-year cycle, and that's also notated in your staff report. So the city's strategy going forward is, involves implementation programs I briefly mentioned before, and these programs address, for the eight-year period, making sure we have land inventory to meet our fair share of housing needs, to facilitate the development of housing for special-needs households such as low-income households, those with disabilities, seniors, veterans, large families, female-headed households, those needing shelter, as well as farm workers. Strategy also affects and proposes the ability to preserve existing housing stocks, so there are programs devoted to that. There are programs related to conserving existing affordable housing opportunities to promote energy conservation, and as I mentioned before, to remove constraints to the development of housing whenever possible. There are also some additional housing programs related to fair housing, and this is a new, under new state law, the, all jurisdictions in California, after the first of this year, when their housing elements come due, they must develop a fair housing assessment of their individual jurisdiction. And our review of that, as evidenced in the staff report, as well as the housing element draft before you, the city has a developed strategy with programs that address fair housing issues related to discrimination, that provide educational materials and provide resources regarding fair housing rights and the responsibilities and services of landowners and property managers, as well as to promote, to facilitate public engagement periodically on fair housing issues, as well as close gaps in and to promote fair housing access to opportunities within the community. As I mentioned earlier briefly, the city has, staff has prepared an addendum to the 2013-2021 housing element negative declaration, and this is an appendix to, or a attachment to tonight's staff report. The addendum demonstrates that the analysis contained in the negative deck adequately addresses the potential physical impacts associated with the implementation of the proposed housing element update, and that none of the conditions described in the California Environmental Quality Act guideline, Section 15161, which if they did, they would require a subsequent EIR or negative declaration, but the city understands and believes that none of those conditions described in that section apply to this particular element. The policies included in the element are designed to bring the city into compliance with state law or to increase the availability of housing sites. Attachment B is that addendum for your consideration tonight and recommendation to the City Council. The city did receive a public comment, and it was received after staff had prepared the staff report, so analysis of that was not provided. However, the comments were, as a memorandum and attachment to your packet tonight. Those comments were received from Pat and Don Vandecar, and they do address the administrative draft 2021-2029 housing element that went to HCD. So staff tonight is recommending, once again, that the commission conduct a public hearing to receive public comment regarding the city-initiated amendment to the general plan housing element, in this case, it's called the draft 2021-2029 housing element update. Then consider that public input received, then make findings, and then forward your recommendation by minute order to the City Council on the element update, as well as the addendum to the negative deck from 2013. Vice Chair Godberg, that concludes my staff report.
Are there any questions by commissioners to staff?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna make a suggestion, if my fellow commissioners are agreeable, that we move directly to the public hearing, open the public hearing for the members of the public to comment, close the public hearing, and then we can discuss and then further suggest that, having been gone through this exercise before, that we really just go page by page, and if a commissioner has a question or a comment, then we just do it that way, otherwise we'll be all over the map. So that would be my suggestion.
Does anybody else have?
Yeah, I think that's a, that does streamline the process, unless there is something that, a question that helps you understand the whole document of staff right at this moment.
No.
I think that's a good way to proceed.
Okay, I will proceed then to public comment. If any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, please approach the podium. You will have three minutes to speak. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the commission at this time?
It appears I'm your only public tonight, Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. This is so important for our city to have a good housing plan because the way cities work is based on how they structure their neighborhoods and their business districts, and so that the two are coordinated and make Placerville a pleasant place to live. So I'm, I think that what's been done so far that I've seen of this housing plan looks pretty good. I'm pleased to see them working towards some very low and low-income housing places. I read the public inputs from the letter that was received, and I would agree with those. I think those were good, solid input. And so I'm happy to see this going forward. I would hope that if it's in the purview of this, that we be sure to keep our ban on having Airbnbs in residential neighborhoods. I think that's so important. I have a friend who lives in Tahoe and has seen his neighborhood destroyed by these Airbnbs. He used to know the neighbors on both sides. He used to know the guy across the street and the one next to him, and he says, since the Airbnbs came in there, you don't know anybody anymore. You don't know whose car that is parked. You don't know the people who are staying up at 2:00 in the morning making noise. And he said, it's destroyed the fabric of their neighborhoods, and really, it's destroying the whole fabric of South Lake Tahoe. So I hope Placerville does not allow that to happen to us. Property rights are one thing, but the rights of all the people together need to be considered too. So that's pretty much my input for today. Thank you very much for serving on this commission. I think it's really important.
Thank you for your comments. So I'll now bring it back to the commission, and per the suggestion, to kind of start at the beginning of the document.
If I may, I have a question for staff on page one of seven. This is actually on the staff report.
Okay.
And it also kind of carries over to page two of seven of the staff report. Yes, and so Andrew, at the bottom, the bottom paragraph on page one, and then continuing also on page two, there's this reference, and it reads funny to me, but I think it's the way the feds wrote it. Starting in the second sentence, it says, promotes and affirmative furthers fair housing opportunities, and then it references on page two in that paragraph, required by the federal, and this is capitalized, affirmative furthering fair housing final rule. And so could you explain what that is? Because it's got a strange name to me. I didn't look it up. I could have looked it up, but I didn't.
What it's referring to in terms of the federal, the Housing and Urban Development Department of the federal government, the year is 2015, they had what's called the final rule, which requires local governments that seek particular funding for particular housing projects in order to assist them, well, let me rephrase. The rule has to do with a certain parameters that local governments must follow in order to hopefully obtain funding to serve the needs of housing under HUD. HUD does process quite a lot of housing development monies, although less so in the last administration. I believe this, the new administration may find that to be a little bit more robust. But the reason that is mentioned like that is because there was some worry in California, the California Legislature, that the federal government was no longer going to proceed with the fair housing program, or extremely reduce the amount of funding that would be dedicated to that purpose. The state legislature basically adopted the language that's mentioned in those paragraphs, and it now requires the local government, cities and counties in California, as I mentioned briefly earlier, that when local jurisdictions update their housing elements after January 1 of this year, and clearly, we fall under that threshold, we have to prepare a fair housing assessment within the city based on that federal rule. If you want me to distill further than that, that might take quite a discussion, but I think you perhaps get the idea that the distinction is, California, it's codified in statute that the language would change in the government code, and I think the health and safety code regarding this particular federal rule and the definitions that they use. So we've based, the state legislature adopted by the governor has codified that information, and so we must follow, and our analysis and our assessment must follow that guiding document from this 2015 timeframe. That's a long-winded answer, I'm sorry. Okay.
Michael, if I may, I think, I struggled over the same thing, and I think part of the problem is maybe there's a typo, and the word should be affirmatively. I understand what the staff report is trying to convey. You're telling us, you're kind of quoting from government code, I think it's 65583.
Yeah.
And I see that on the second page of the attachment that we got from the reviewers at HCD, and they're just quoting the government code, and it says, affirmatively further fair housing in accordance with Chapter 15. So that's the government code that I think Andrew's trying to explain to us how there's both a federal and a state, but they use this language. I found it kind of difficult. Once I read through it a couple times, I understood what they meant, but it is a strange way to put it, but I think the idea is to, that the program promotes and affirmatively furthers fair housing. So does that help you at all?
Yeah, that's, so it's in an action-oriented way. So you're furthering fair housing, and you're doing it affirmatively, which means that's an action kind of, okay.
And I understand too.
The elements all look up.
As I looked at the fair housing element, I realized that this is a new component, and the state is very concerned about, so I think it's important for us to try to use their same language so that they know that we recognize the importance that they place on this. So I hope that helps.
Director, Revas and I were talking about, perhaps it would be clear if we added LY after that word, then it would be consistent throughout. Is that affirmatively? Even though, probably grammatically, that's probably not the correct way of doing that.
It's difficult, yeah, other than every time calling out A.
Put it in quotes.
Was it AFFH?
Yeah.
It is, it's difficult to make it read in the narrative that you're referring to, the title of the government code section.
We will make that edit if that's.
Are there additional questions on the staff report?
I set my comments up entirely different than you guys are talking, so I'm kind of out of sync with what I was planning on talking about. I don't, if you want to continue this way, I will jump in when I get to those things, but I set up to talk about the housing element draft and the things in it first, and then go to the staff report, so.
Well, it sounds like we're done with the staff report, which brings us to your presentation.
Yeah, so I think then moving on to the draft housing element update, it looks like we would be starting with housing goals and policies. Goal A, so I think if there are comments or questions that commissioners have related to goal A of goals and policies.
Madam Chair, I think if we do that, we're gonna be here for hours and hours. I think maybe what we need to do is each commissioner go through the items that they have, and then if you see that I say something that duplicates what you're gonna say, then skip that, okay? Instead of doing item for item, because this is a very large document.
That doesn't bother me, that's absolutely fine as well.
Yeah, I'm fine with switching to that. So we can go ahead and let whoever would like to start.
I have minimal comments. So on page, oh geez, goal C, goal C, item policy four, this is dealing with the hillside development standards. I didn't entirely underst-
Page number on this?
I don't have a page number. Oh, I'm sorry, page six. Page six. I forgot. Page six, goal C, policy number four. I didn't, so this policy will be removed, so this is a change. And if I, I just want to make sure that I understand, actually, I don't understand, so I kind of needed to explain, because I, well, I'm hoping that the result is we're minimizing cuts in hillsides. We've had some projects come before us, and I know I've always wanted the development to go with the land, so it looks like it fits, as opposed to mass pad grading kind of approaches. So I'm not sure what we're talking about here.
Can I have you repeat the page number?
Yeah, page six.
Page six of the policy document, or?
Page six of the addendum, I think. Right, we're still on the addendum.
Yeah, I think you're on page six of the addendum in the staff report, not the-
Page six of the addendum.
It's where he's commenting.
Okay, so we've already changed direction, so do you want to talk about the addendum now, instead of the housing element? I'd be fine to answer those questions, but.
He's gonna ask his questions and we'll move on.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I think that's kind of how we thought we might do it.
All right.
So can you just explain this one for me, please? Can you find it?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring it up.
Okay.
Page six, policy four.
Yes.
Okay, to help you understand what this table, maybe that's what would help.
I just want to know, it says the policy will be removed, and then there's kind of a discussion.
Yeah.
I'm unclear as to what the final outcome of this suggestion is.
It was not carried over to the current or the update in front of you tonight.
And the result of that is what?
Well, by removing the policy, staff, it's staff's opinion, such a policy does constrain the development of housing, because it limits, perhaps limits where and how much and what density the city can achieve. However, the city does respect and have certainly the authority to review under any development project those efforts or those outcomes of a potential development project as it affects, you know, aesthetics, visual character, et cetera.
So let me make sure I understand, then, basically, we're saying that the policy that restricts development on hillsides, hillside development, is tying up a lot of land that otherwise could be used to meet our RENA requirements, right? It's available land. So we're going to, we're going to remove that restriction on hillside development, but we'll replace it with, and that's what's not clear, I guess, we will replace it with standards necessary to retain aesthetic and character of the city by minimizing cuts and fill. So I guess that last part, by minimizing cuts and fill on slow properties, seems to me to be in conflict with removing the policy and thereby allowing cuts and fills. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Perhaps I misspoke. The policy calls for the city to review the standards. The city is not proposing to change the standards. The city is not proposing to change the standards after our analysis, so maybe I misspoke.
Okay.
We are just not carrying forward this policy to the next housing element. But we are not amending the provisions of the hillside development standards. There are no changes proposed to those.
You're removing the review.
Removing, removing the policy review, yes.
Okay.
Of course, the commission as a group, if you feel that is important, we could retain it and add it back in.
I'm still unclear what removing the policy, what the result will be of removing the policy review. If you're telling me, look, we're still not going to, we're still, God, we're still going to review the project, and you know, and we're going to have the standards, it's just very unclear to me how this is laid out, and it's something I think is pretty important, you know, for aesthetics and character. So I'm not opposed to building on hillsides, but I think how it's done is very important.
But the standards remain?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Okay, the standards remain, so what am I losing here?
Chair, if I can try and point out, maybe try and simplify this. Basically, Policy 4 is directing staff to do a review of the hillside development standards as a way of reducing cost. But I would say that's a two-edged sword. Typically, when you're looking at doing cuts and fills or work on steep slopes, you're increasing the cost of that development. So to make you feel better, because it seems like your primary concern, if I may, Commissioner Friend, was, is this going to hamper the city's ability to provide affordable housing? Staff did a thorough analysis, and we determined that we have adequate acreage, lands that are zoned designated for affordable housing to meet our arena numbers through the planning time horizon, all the way through 2029, regardless of whether we look at the slope issue or not.
Okay, so it's like, we don't need to look at the slope issue.
No.
But I just want to make sure that, because my real concern frankly is the ultimate aesthetic impact, that's all I'm.
Right, and I know that's very, very important with the city. We have sections in our development standards that require that we look at slopes and rid lines and those kinds of things, retention of trees and other aesthetics, and so, but I just want you to be sure that that's not impeding the city's ability to provide for affordable housing. Staff did a very thorough, what we call an achievable density analysis, where we look at the various constraints, so that we're not going to apply or we're not going to state that on these particular parcels, we'll be able to achieve our required densities to provide for affordability if they can't be developed at a certain density. So we went through that analysis, and I think hopefully that, we can get more into weeds, but I think you're safe.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you, Michael, thank you for the indulgence.
Commissioner List?
Looking at the housing element draft, I would like you to find page B85. We'll look at B85 and B2. B85, we have an overview of the numbers that responded to the questionnaire. We had a total response of 215. 175 were non-Hispanic whites. 26 were, and that was 87 percent, and we have 26 non-whites for 12 percent. If we go over to, excuse me, I'm sorry. If we go over to B2, B2, the population of the city by race, figures are based on non-Hispanic or Latino and Hispanic or Latino. This chart shows that 87 percent of the population is non-Hispanic or non-Latino, and 12 percent are Hispanic. We go back over to 85, and on 85, once again, it says that 87 percent are non-Hispanic or Latino, and 12 percent are Hispanic. We get down to the bottom of the second paragraph, I'm all right with those figures, okay? My problem is with the summation at the bottom of the second paragraph. It says, "This indicates that non-white residents are overrepresented in compared to their share of the broader population."
Underrepresented, it says.
Underrepresented, excuse me. Non-whites are underrepresented. I would like to have that statement removed, because if we look at it, we're seeing that it's exactly the same numbers, 87 and 12. Staff, like to comment on that?
Is your question, what is the value of that statement? The last sentence?
I don't like, I don't like a statement that's put in there that isn't factual. And in this case, in my opinion, that's not factual, because I'm looking at the two charts, and the two charts are giving me the same information.
Yeah, so I would concur, I'm not sure I understand why that sentence isn't there.
Is, I'm not sure what you're, are you saying that they're underrepresented in our population?
In this, whoever wrote this last statement is saying that the Hispanic population, in this case, is underrepresented.
But they're talking about underrepresented in the survey questionnaire.
Yeah.
But that's what we're talking about, okay?
But I think that's.
But they're exactly the same percentages.
I don't believe that they are. So the, the white population on page B2 is 78 percent.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute. It says non-Hispanic and Latino, so they're taking all of those together.
This is saying the non-white residents.
On here, on page, on B2, okay? It says non-Hispanic and Latino, and then it says Hispanic and Latino. Okay, you see that?
It's like an 81 and 19, pretty much.
81 and.
19.
Well, if you go clear to the, to the 14 to 18, clear on the right, it's 87 and 12. Then if you go over to page.
Oh, but that's the county, but that's the county.
Yeah, I mean, so this says, this says on page B2, the only non-white population with a sample of Hispanic and Latino population makes up 19 percent, and only 12 percent of non-whites responded to the survey. So that is a correct sentence, because it's less than 19 percent.
But when I'm looking, I just want to point out that make sure you're looking at the city of Placerville portion of that table as opposed to El Dorado County. So El Dorado County's portion of the table is on the right, and the city of Placerville is on the left. So the total non-Hispanic or Latino.
Okay, so we have, we have 80 percent instead of 87 percent.
Right.
Non-Hispanic and Latinos, and 19 percent Latinos.
But that still matches, 81 and 81 still match. And 26 non-white residents.
Well, Table 1.
I just, I just think this, I just think that last statement is, I don't know, I feel like it's, it's, it's saying something about our community that isn't there. And I don't like that.
On page B2, it says that?
There's, no, the last sentence on B85.
This is on B85, second paragraph at the bottom. This indicates that non-white residents are underrepresented compared with their share of the broader population.
I think this gets to Vice Chair Gottberg's point, is that the statistics that are brought up on B85 have to do with the respondents to the questionnaire, and not necessarily the population at large. Those have to do with the respondents to the.
But I think the sentence is saying that the responses, they were underrepresented compared to their share of the broader population. The share of the broader population is this 19.1 percent, correct? That's Hispanic, Latino is 19.1 percent, and then the responses was only 12.1 percent, right? But that, that's, I don't like that last sentence, because underrepresented, it kind of means like we're ignoring some people. Folks had a choice whether they responded, so I don't.
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't think that sentence is correct. You could say, it'd be accurate to say that fewer, that fewer non-white individuals completed the survey compared to their share of the broader population. That's true, but to say that underrepresented, I don't think is fair, because I would presume that everyone had an equal opportunity to respond to the survey. So the underrepresented, to me, would suggest that there was unequal opportunity to participate in the survey, to participate in the government, really, this is a government process.
I disagree. I think you're reading way too much into the word underrepresented, underrepresented. I think it's a factual statement. We've got 12.1 percent of the respondents as opposed to the overall population, as you pointed out correctly, it's 19.1. It's just a fact, and we're talking about a survey, we're, the results of the survey and the public opinion, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, please go ahead.
I think I want to clarify something. So I'm looking at an appendix, page B2, Table 1. That is, that is census data, so that's something, that's a very large poll of whoever submitted the census data. Going back to page B85, we're making that statement, because that's based on folks that responded to the survey, so those figures are not related. The survey was meant to garner public responses to the housing and different questions. It's not, it's very, it could be very different than the census data, they're not going to be alike.
Totally, totally agree with that. I think my, my issue, and I share Commissioner List's issue, is the word underrepresented, I think can be, in fact, interpreted to mean something other than perhaps what it is meant here, and therefore we can be clearer in our diction. It would be more precise to say that fewer non-whites responded in the survey or participated in the survey or provided responses compared to their share in the broader population. That would be precisely accurate. The word underrepresented is not precise. It can have different meanings. And so I think, let's just be precise, we're saying, that way there's no mistake about what we're saying. Underrepresented is suggestive.
So in other words, you think saying underrepresented gives a feeling like there was some bias in the survey, or something that caused that particular group to be not representative in the survey?
Exactly, it can raise the question, yes, it can raise the question.
Okay, I could, I could see that.
Do we have a fix or a suggested language change?
Something along the lines, something along the lines of fewer non-white residents participated in the survey compared to their share of the broader population.
And then therefore, their views are underrepresented, or we could say, we could leave it more open-ended.
I would accept that this.
Therefore, their viewpoints may be underrepresented compared to their share of the broader population. Because what follows is the results of the survey, and we have summary statements on what the respondents indicated are their concerns regarding fair housing. So I, yeah, I see what you're saying, I don't know that there is bias to, but the fact is that fewer non-white, non-Hispanic white, there were fewer non-Hispanic white respondents. It does not reflect their percent of our overall population. But I think what the authors are trying to indicate to the reader is that as you read the results of the survey, keep in mind that their viewpoint may be underrepresented. I think that's important to keep in there, that, so their viewpoint may be underrepresented as you look at the numbers that follow.
May not be sufficiently captured.
I disagree, because you sent a survey out, and you take whoever responds to that survey, and you deal with that data. If you're going to say, well, gee, I've got to have X number of this race of people, and this race of people, and this race of people, or otherwise it doesn't make, it doesn't work, then, then you're, you're coming up with a solution based on, totally on race, not on people within the community, from the way I see it. I have, you know, the other part of this is, here we have this, on page B2, we have non-Hispanic and Latino, and then we have Hispanic or Latino, and then we come over here and we, we bring in the non-white residents. I really think that that needs to be changed to Hispanic or Latino.
So it should all be consistent?
So it'd be consistent.
Couldn't, couldn't one argue, while we're, the suggestion is that they're underrepresented, isn't, isn't there another possibility that they have less concern or less interest? We don't know. So we really don't know the reason why there were fewer responses as a percentage of the broader population. We don't know. I mean, it could be it's a less concern to them. Do you follow what I'm saying? I'm not saying that it is, I'm just saying, we should not be adding the supposition in at this point. Just state factually what happened. Here are the number of responses, and here's how it breaks down as a percentage of the broader population. We have, we have, we know what the census data tells us, and then here's what the engagement was, and just leave it at that.
Well, as written, it is factual, so I, now I'm very confused.
No, because what you're saying is, is we need to take this concern of underrepresentation, and that needs to be kind of an overlay as we go through the rest of the analysis. And I'm saying, well, let's be careful, because we don't know what that underrepresentation, we don't know what that disparity in response means. We really don't. We don't know what it means.
If, if in the opening of this statement, it would have said something about, in the city of Placerville, we have X non-Latino, and we have Y Latino, okay? And out of all of these, 215 send in a response, and of those number, these were this, then you could say it was underrepresented. But without having a breakdown in here, the population breakdown by race, I just feel like that statement is incorrect and should not be there.
I think staff has a suggestion, and we can move forward. We can strike that last sentence completely. It's not going to affect anything at all.
Okay.
I would support that.
I would support that.
Okay, I can too.
Okay, moving on to your next item then.
Yes, thank you. On page B94, Table 18, Goal 3, Metrics and Milestones, third one down, there's a quote, "Conduct at least six workshops of fair housing issues and resources." I would like to know what that would, what that would look like, what.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, B94.
We're on Appendix B-94.
Yes, sir.
In the right-hand column, third one down.
Okay, I get you. I see it, thank you.
I'm just curious what, what these six workshops would look like.
I'll refer you to the policy document.
Right.
And I'll get the page for you. And I'll get the page for you.
If we have information on the policy documents, just point out the page. You don't have to go over with this.
Okay. On page 18 of the policy document is where that milestone is captured. Not verbatim, but the intent is there. Under Program D2, Community Outreach, where the city will conduct a workshop every two years, starting with next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the next step, you're preparing a document to be handed out. What's that going to look like? Give me an idea of what this, this document would look like, or what information you would be going over with in terms of fair housing issues and, and resources.
Again, we're talking about workshop?
Yes.
Well, what we envision this workshop to consist of would be to assemble a variety of housing advocates who address this particular or those particular income levels, as well as special interest groups dealing with a variety of special populations, to discuss these matters, and also to help educate them. So part of this outreach would be to educate them on what their rights are, and what, and how, if they wanted to file a complaint, for instance, a discrimination, this would be an educational opportunity to provide them with information where that can be discussed. And some people, we would also, another program deals with actually producing handouts, pamphlets, et cetera, and web access or to our website where this information can easily be obtained. So in many cases, there may be, over the, over the next eight years, there may be changes to a apartment block. Maybe the ownership changes and they start to discriminate against folks. Well, having this community outreach gives the community member an opportunity to learn more about what their rights are for that particular instance. So does that, does that help you?
Yeah, great. Thank you. All right, now, there were a number of figures. Let's start with figure C-5. And that's on, that's on page C6. Appendix C6. It says percentage overpayment by homeowners. Can you explain that, please? No, C5.
I was on C7.
Yeah, that's the next one. Kind of towards the back of the guide.
If I can just interject, I think the importance of this, it, this updates our analysis of our housing element and addresses one of the reviewers' comments, HCD, under the fair housing, let's see. Number three, they're talking about a fair housing program, disproportionate housing needs. And this phrase, overpavement and overcrowding. What the reviewer pointed out was that the city needed to provide more analysis on these topics. And so I think what this map shows is where the overpayment, yeah, is generalized to occur. And I think the importance of it is to show that we don't have a real trend on that or displacement as a result of it. It's simply that it does exist. But Andrew, have you been able to put your fingers on this map and can tell us a bit more?
I have, yeah. In Section 3, the Housing Needs Assessment, we do define what is overpayment. So that may, may help you with, with, and I'll just, it's a pretty short section here where it talks about it. But overpayment refers to households that pay more than 30% of their monthly income, are deemed to be, to overpay for housing, and households that pay more than 50% of their monthly income are deemed to severely overpay for housing. So I think what that, what that particular graph is mentioning is, is the location based on census data where folks, households are degrees of overpayment in terms of their overall income dedicated toward, toward housing.
Okay. I try to look at this as a novice coming in off the street, okay? And if I looked at that, I'm going, percent overpayment by homeowners. It doesn't give me enough information. Just adding what you said about the 30% of their income on that chart right there would, would clear that up immensely, okay? And I think the same thing for C6, which is the next page, dealing with renters, okay? If we had a percentage to work with there, that would help to clarify to the person reading this chart what, what that's all about.
Madam Chair, if I may, hopefully this would be helpful to the commission. We have Appendix A, which is a glossary of terms. This is a huge document. If we were to provide a definition throughout the document, we'd probably increase its size probably substantially. So I want to direct you to Appendix Page A-8. Both those terms are defined right at the very top. So overcrowding is defined by the U.S. Census, a household greater than 1.01 persons per room, excluding bathrooms, kitchens, hallways, and porches. Severe overcrowding is defined as households with greater than 1.51 persons per room. And then right under that, then there's a, a definition of overpayment, which Mr. Painter discussed earlier. But you can see all the different terms that are in this. So if there is a term that seems somewhat puzzling, hopefully it's in the Appendix A glossary of terms.
To, to, to be sensitive to the issue you raised, Pierre, though, you could put simply in parentheses, C, meaning S-E, S-E-E, C-A2, or whatever, then, then you can automatically reference it, right? Without having to repeat the entire definition and therefore increase the size of the document. You've got plenty of room just to say parenthetically, C, whatever. That, that might be helpful.
I just wanted to make sure you were aware that we have a glossary of terms in the document.
Now then, then of course the question.
But a lot of people, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, sir.
But a lot of people will turn to, turn to a graph like this, and they'll look at it without going to the glossary. And that was my point. Just, just the simple words, based on 30% of their, of their income on those two charts would, would help immensely on that.
And then the term overpayment, what, again, quibbling over words, but it goes back to the adage of champagne taste on a beer budget, right? Okay, so you overbought. Is that another way to say? Overbought, overpayment. So I struggle with, okay, what's the value, what's the value then of presenting the information that way? Okay? I understand the concern of, well, you know, people, they're spending so much, such a high percentage of their income on, on housing. That, that part I get, but it, how we phrase it, and, you know, we're trying to imply things on choices. So I struggle with that in terms of how we then set policy. Because somebody may very well, I really want that house, or I want that land, and I'm, I'm going to pay for it. I really am.
No, that's a very good point, but I just want to, you know, you keep in mind that these definitions are, we cannot change them.
Got you.
And I disagree with, I know you want to make this more accessible to the person off the street, but I don't think we should take that approach. Reading a document like this, you, requires due diligence and study, and you, you need to have some level of background. And I think everything is presented in here. But to annotate all of the maps with that kind of detail really would involve a lot more work. And I appreciate, you know, that you, you saw this and flagged that particular map about overpayment. That is a very sensitive issue right now because people have, in our economic situation, have maybe gotten themselves into a tenuous situation, paying more than the standard. It's just a rule of thumb with 30% of your income going for housing. That's, I've heard that for years. It's explained well elsewhere in the document. And I don't think we should have either staff go back and annotate all the maps with various levels of detail to explain what the ranges are. That, that's a lot of work. The other way to do it is to have the consultant do it, also a very expensive proposition. I think that instead, we should rely on the, that the readers are a bit more sophisticated. If they wonder, if they puzzle over what that is, then they need to dig into the document, find that definition that exists. We should make sure that the, the glossary has that sufficiently defined so that it can be explained.
I disagree. Adding three words to that page, those two pages.
But it's three words to that page and three words to every other map. I mean, I, I agree with you, John. I thought some of the maps could be better explained, but I realize the level of input and cost for that, I'm not sure that we're going to realize much gain for that.
See, right here, it says draft. When you have a draft, that's what you're doing, is you're going back and you're making sure this is the document that you want to put out to the public. And that's why I think we need to do these kinds of things. We need to make sure that the public understands what they're looking at when they do that. And adding those very few words to those pages, I don't think is burdensome to anybody.
Well, I disagree. I think going back and making those annotations to each and every map to make them consistent is, is a bit of a burden and a cost. And again, if you, if the reader gets into the appendices, that's someone who's already engaged, and I think they will have that background that they need to help them understand what's being presented.
Would it be possible to have very simply upfront, you know, like a read me first, right? So to anyone who's picking up this document, okay, here are a couple of things. Note, reference, you know, the, the maps to the definition. Any some, any little set of instructions, for lack of a better term, that might help cover these things without the burden of, of doing all the labor. I agree with, with Commissioner List in terms of the clarity and being able to understand what that graph is trying to tell you. I'm also sensitive to Commissioner Keeney's concern about the amount of work it would be to get there. I'm just thinking there might be kind of a shortcut by simply having a set of instructions on, on how to do it, or here are some pieces you need to know, pay particular attention to it. Just a thought.
On that vein, I think I can speak for Director Rebus. We could certainly add a paragraph into the introduction, Section 1, that might allude to or mention that terms used in this document may be found in Appendix A. I'm assuming that that's the first chapter that they would probably read, but that's.
We can hope.
Yeah. But thank you, thank you.
I mean, I agree with Commissioner Keeney. I think if somebody's reading this, there's a glossary of terms, and there's an ability to find that information. And I don't think it needs to be on every single figure in the entire document as long as it's there. I'm not opposed to putting something upfront. I mean, even potentially in the, I know it's, it's in Appendix A at the beginning, which I already feel like is upfront, but maybe perhaps before the first of these figures, that just says all terms are defined in Appendix, you know, A, Page C, Page A1. And then that sort of takes, before you start, all of the figures so that people have a reference there. That might be a simple solution that then provides that information if somebody only goes to Appendix B and doesn't realize that there's a glossary of terms in the document.
Kind of along those lines. Again, I'm thinking of something that starts out as about this document, right? About this, okay? Because it is massive. This is a tome. This is a massive tome. It's complicated. We want it to be of value, okay? Whatever we can do to assist people that are going to use it. With, there's due diligence, right? Because, because it does take diligence to go through this, without question. So just something along those lines. I think we can, we can meet all of the objectives that have been expressed so far.
Okay, I have another one. Appendix D, Housing Rental Issues. It's on D1. Housing Rental Issues, affordability, 29%, said this was an issue. And my question, and I don't think we can answer this, is based on what? Compared to other areas, compared to what they paid in Southern California? What they felt fair, fair should be? That, that kind of, kind of an open-ended affordability. You know, man, I wish my, I wish my mortgage wasn't as high as it was. Well, because of the house I bought, I, you know, I pay a bigger mortgage, okay? That's all I have on the, the draft report. The next one I'd like you to turn over in the packet to page 23. And this is Program 13, Density Bonuses. Am I correct that the city general funds could or are being given to developers? The develop, what development standards have been reduced? I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the bullet points in the right-hand column. It says incentives included but not limited to. You, you up with me?
Yeah, I'm on the page, 23.
Okay. So, so the questions that go along with this, are, are city general funds being used to give bonuses, that's what their terms are, not mine, to, to developers? Or could they be used to?
Yeah, currently, the city has no density bonus projects. Zero. What this is, is mentioning is that these are incentives that the city could employ for someone who wishes to develop under a density bonus program. And it could involve, as the bullet points describe, a reduction in development standards, setbacks, building height, et cetera. It could involve some acquiescence on architectural design. The other regulatory incentives, so is that the one you're most concerned about? The use, potential use of funds? Well, it's possible.
What development standards, what development standards are being reduced or changed? What architectural design requirements are being reduced? What regulatory incentives are being proposed?
Well, under the state's density bonus provisions, there are some incentives that the city must provide. And must meaning the applicant is the one that brings forward which ones that he or she or they wish to deviate from or receive a reduction in or elimination thereof. The city may not have much discretion over which ones they can take or which ones they choose to use. Because the, again, really the purpose of the density bonus program is to develop housing. And housing at a particular income level, which is what the density bonus law provides. A certain number, certain percentage of the density bonus that's granted can be, well, let me backtrack. The, the provisions allow for, let's say a developer wants to build a 100-unit apartment block. And they want a density bonus. So if they propose to set aside 20 of those 100 units for a particular income level, under the state's density bonus language, you get a certain percentage of density bonus above what would normally be allowed in the zone. The, the interesting thing about the density bonus is the units that that developer could obtain, those do not have to be deed restricted to income level. They could be market rate. They could be market rate. So the city wins by getting a certain percentage of affordable units, but also perhaps a mixed income community where we get market rate as well. And I think, I know as planners here, we certainly want to encourage a variety and a mixed income development whenever possible. So, these are incentives that, yes, the city could consider, and in some cases, the city may have to provide. But do they involve financial contributions? Not necessarily. It could be a reduction in, in maybe connections to city water system or the city sewer system as a reduction in cost. Director Evas, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I agree with everything that Andrew was saying, but I just want to point out that this particular section, the addendum, is a document that was prepared in accordance with SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. So, is the adoption of this, of the new Cycle Six element having a significant effect on the environment? And we relied on the negative declaration that was prepared for the previous housing element. So it takes a look at these programs and policies in terms of its impact on the environment. So, I would just direct you to the actual housing element. So for the, so if there's an issue regarding Program 13, Density Bonus, it may be worded a little bit different, but I would go to page 2-22, because that is what's proposed for that policy, where this, it may be focusing more, it may be different in some of the wording there, where you'll have a complete analysis of the program that's proposed. We have a lack section where we indicate whether we're gonna continue, modify, or delete the program. So, unless you think that we're not considering environmental impact, then I would just go to the actual housing element policy section as opposed to the addendum.
So I did highlight, I did highlight this. First of all, I want to say that I support mixed development as opposed to concentrated development in one way or the other. I think that's all, kind of a good strategy to have, have mixed development. I always get concerned when I see reduction in standards, reduction in design, reduction in standards, reduction in design, and so on and so forth. So, I'm unclear as to how, what role the commission plays in the application of the density bonuses, which could include, as they're bulleted here in this document, as well as bulleted in the, on page 2-23, I think. So, what is, what is our role? Because obviously, you know, I don't want to, I don't like the trade-off or the binary choice of, well, we can get more housing to meet our RENA requirements and we'll just build these, you know, gee, concrete boxes, or whatever you want to call it, you understand? Character, going back to the character of the city. So I guess it's unclear to me, in this document, how it relates to what's proposed, how it relates to what we do, what our, what our role is in this. So if we're faced with a density bonus where there's been a reduction in development standards or a reduction in architectural design requirements, how does that work with us and our, and our role and what we try to do?
Well, a project that involves a density bonus would come before you, and staff would illustrate and/or describe what incentives that a developer would have the right to require of us to provide to them. So those would be things that would be known, known to you as a commission, known to the public, as well as requested by the developer. The key thing, under the density bonus state statutes, the city must, must approve a density bonus if it meets the criteria under the statute. The city has no discretion to say no.
Okay, so that's, you know, that's really important to know. That's really the nut of the thing, frankly.
Part of the discussion that staff would have with a developer would be discussing what these incentives that they want, and really what we can provide. There may be some, some things that maybe it, we just could not provide. And perhaps we would alternatively ask them to choose another. I don't know, we're, this is all hypothetical, since we have no projects that I could even go back to. Certainly during your time, member friend, I don't think there's been a single one, and I've been here 20 years and-
I vaguely recall one, maybe. And that's fine, it's rare, but-
Yeah.
This is, this is a nine-year, eight-year document, right? Eight years-
Eight years, yeah.
So a lot can happen in eight years.
Correct.
And things that HUD's doing, for example, there's a lot of pressures, I think. So, we're the guardian, you know, we're the guardians here, frankly. This is gonna be a policy document for the next eight years. I realize it's also to show how we're affirmatively furthering, whatever that, whatever that is. And here are the things that we can do. I get, I get all that. But at the end of the day, I want, I want to know what these things mean. It goes back to the hillside thing that I was concerned about. Those things are important to me. I want to know what they, what they mean and how, and how they might work. So, thanks for the time.
Sure. One thing to add, and I think Director Evas can chime in as well, is that one of the programs we have for this particular cycle involves some grant monies that we did receive last year, and we plan to implement and hire a consultant to, to prepare for, and you guys would be involved, with objective design standards. And when that occurs, then a developer would pick from the various options that may be in that particular set of, of standards to choose from when they build a development project. And so really, your review of a density bonus, when those have been established, will be very minimal, because they would have picked from, picked from their choice of, if that makes, if that makes sense to you. Do you have anything to add, Pierre? I think, I think that, that would, that would help you, because then all of that role would have been done by you with, with your input to develop a set of standards that the city accepts for multifamily and even attached, single-family homes.
No, Andrew is correct. We do have a program where one of, one of our objectives is to, a way of reducing the cost of housing, of course, is to do the entitlements upfront. So we would, we would be, we are looking at hiring a consultant to do what's called objective design standards, so that we'll go through the community process, the objective design standards will come before you, they'll be site-specific, we're looking at three sites to develop elevations for those affordable apartment complexes. And the other item we would need to do, of course, is SEQA. So that, so we could have it by right, we'd have to do the SEQA analysis. So the city is in receipt of additional funding, where we're gonna hire a consultant to do a SEQA analysis of these three sites. So with this, with the SEQA, with the objective development standards, we can actually then have three sites that will be by right, because that's typically the more difficult hurdle for a developer when they're coming in, looking at investing in a piece of property to develop affordable housing, is not really knowing how you're gonna get through the process. It could be long and lengthy, and of course, it adds the cost. So I think that's very, that's very important, and I hope that makes all of you comfortable, because the SEQA documents, of course, would come before you, as well as the design standards.
And having those objective standards helps to reduce the cost to the developer, because they, they would not have to come before you for a discretionary review of their elevations, because you all and city council would determine what set of design parameters that they would need to adhere to with their submittal. So then it would be more or less a, not an over-the-counter permit, but in essence, a ministerial permit. Unless it involves subdivision of land, which that still would go back before you if they were, you know, fee simple, fee title, individual lots. So hopefully that helps.
Thank you. Okay, the next one. In that same document, page 27, Program 15, Permit Development Impact Fees. And in this, they talk about payment of fees over twelve months, da-da-da, and so on. And my, my response in reading this is, and I talked to a, I'll explain that in a minute. Could there be a plan put in place where the permits and development impact fees could be paid at the close of escrow instead of upfront? This, thus the owner would, the owner, not the builder, would pay that when the mortgage was set. Now, when we stop and think about it, if I'm a builder and I have impact fees, mitigation fees, what, thirty, forty thousand dollars? Okay, I give the city thirty or forty thousand dollars and I start building my building, and I'm being charged for that forty thousand dollars that's sitting in the coffers of the city. Okay? And if I didn't have to pay that, my cost of building that house just went down a whole bunch. Okay? And then I get down to the end, and as a demand on escrow, the city then would say, okay, for this house to come out of escrow, it has to, it has to have these fees paid. I just, I talked to a good friend of mine that worked in escrow, and she says, well, I've never heard of anything like that. So, but we talk about postponing for twelve months, and in some cases, it'd probably be less if you had a builder come in and do that. But go ahead, respond.
Sure. Yeah. Director Evas actually authorized a developer who's building out, they're nearly done, building out the Ridge at Orchard Hill, the portion that had been plotted about a decade ago. And so, yes, at escrow, they do, they do complete the fee requirements. So, yeah, that certainly can be negotiated, and that's certainly under our purview to do so. So, yeah, that's, that does work, and it does occur.
We also did that for the Escaton development as well.
Oh, okay.
So, it's a good program.
I, I don't know where, anywhere it's written, and I've never heard of being used. That was why I brought that up. Okay. The last one is page 19. And-
Is that page 19 in the SEQA document?
Okay. Page 19, quote, "In order to maintain acceptable service ratios, response times, and other performance objectives." That's the end of the, of 14A, under public service. The second one down says police protection. Under police protection, the box "less than significant" was marked. Improving last cycle of housing elements and rezoning of properties at Cold Springs and Middletown Road to allow somewhere around a hundred units, and I don't remember exactly the number, it may be lesser, it may be more, of extreme low-cost housing units. Our chief of police stated that this development would have no impact or significant impact on his, on he and his department's ability to provide current service levels for the city. He was right in one thing. He retired. I'm not convinced that a, that a number of low, very low, and extreme low-cost housing units will have less than significant impact on police services. I therefore request that on page 19, number 14, public service on the line, police protection, be changed to potentially significant impact from the lesser significance than significant.
So this could, this is project, this is project-
Specific, correct? So, so could it not be less, less than significant with mitigation incorporated? So a project comes before you, and so there's a valid concern.
You're looking at the original negative declaration document, right?
Yeah.
Right.
But now we're in a mitigated, right?
So this is evaluating the impact of the housing element itself, not an individual project. There aren't any projects being proposed.
No.
We have policies and, and implementation plan.
Absolutely. But, but what I'm saying is, the way this form was filled out, okay?
This form was filled out on the last draft, housing element, not on a specific development. So I think your concern was about a specific development that itself would undergo, possibly undergo, environmental review.
But let me just, let me just offer, let me just offer that if we were to meet our entirety of low and very low income, all in one area, for example, that could potentially impact public service.
But that's a project. That's not, that's not this-
No, 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 actually, that's not a project. That could be a whole group of proj-
And those would have their own environmental review. They, this is, this is reviewing the housing element. This is not speaking to individual projects of, of any economic-
I, I agree, but you have to take that logic and say, okay, so this is, here's our, here's our housing element document, here are the policies that we're gonna pursue, here's our RENA requirements. All these things taken collectively, are they gonna have, if we adopt all of them as written, are they gonna have any impacts? And I think that it's, it's not an illegitimate position to take, that there could be impacts on greenhouse gases, there could be impact on the environment, depending on how it's structured. I think, I don't agree that it's potentially significant. I think everything, if it's mitigated, it'll be less than significant. It all depends on the mitigation. So in that case, that's where I would change that, too. But I-
Well, Madam Chair, if I may-
Yeah. I was gonna ask a question, but go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this checklist is from 2013, so we cannot change it, first of all. So, and you have to look at, the housing element is a policy document. So you're looking at SEQA programmatically.
Yes.
And as stated, this is not a project-specific SEQA document. For example, when I was talking about those three sites that we're gonna identify to make them by right, we're gonna do a full analysis, a full SEQA analysis. It'll be either a mitigated negative deck or an environmental impact report, if that's required. So all this is doing is, is this is looking at the 2013 negative declaration that we cannot change, so get that out of your head. It's a reference. But we're using that, we're relying on that former document. We go through the analysis of all the policies. That's what Commissioner List was referencing, is all of the changes then from the 2013, 21 housing element to this new one. And does it really affect anything? In staff's opinion, it doesn't. If you feel that it does, and that pushes us into a mitigated negative declaration, then we're gonna have to go back, prepare the SEQA document, recirculate, and then we'll have to come back to you.
One thing I want my commissioners to understand is that the piece of property I was talking about, the corner of Cold Springs and Middletown Road, is, is off the table as far as we're concerned.
That, that project has had a environmental document prepared and adopted for it. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared specifically for that project.
And it is not coming back to us in any form. That's what we were told.
The environmental document came before you, and you provided a recommendation to city council when the action was taken on that zone, zone change and general plan amendment. What you are referring to is the physical development. No, that will not come back before you, because it's, it's a ministerial permit now, under the HO.
Right.
If that's what you're referring to, then it's, it's the, the design of the structures, the layout, the landscaping, provided that they meet the conditions of approval as set forth in the environmental document, and the conditions of approval on the entitlement for that location, that HO overlay.
And my point is, I, I think it was my second year or first year as, as a commissioner, and it kind of went over my head. And, and then having the police chief tell me, no, it's not gonna have any impact on the community. And I'm, and I have battled with this, that I can't believe that you can put seventy-five or a hundred extreme low-cost housing units on a piece of property and have no impact on policing. Not in my world.
I guess I would just point out that this document is not providing any entitlements. That particular- That particular project was a project-specific development that came, that came before you and also went to council. It was a general plan amendment and a rezone, environmental document was prepared and that's, that ship has sailed, if you will, and it's not, it's, it's not the same as this. This, this is a policy document, so we're looking at it at a programmatic level, a policy level. This document is not entitling any property.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I, I guess my point to the commission is, we need to be very careful when we look at these things to really understand the impact it's gonna have on our community. And, and I think we failed our community, um, in, in two thousand and thirteen. I'm, I'm finished, we can move on.
If I may, if it makes you, you know, feel a little bit more comfortable, those three, again, those, we are looking at three sites that we will, and we'd like to entitle, to make it, um, more advantageous for a developer to come in and develop that property. All of that entitlement process will come before you. So, we'll come with, with the development, um, guide, uh, the objective design standards and the SEQA document that will accompany then the general plan amendment and rezone to entitle that property. And all that comes before you and be aired out at a project-specific level.
Okay.
Do you have any further-
I'm done.
-questions? Moving on to Commissioner Keady?
Oh, thank you. I have very few, few comments. I appreciate staff's work to, um, update the, uh, housing element and clearly lay out the programs that, uh, are being continued, modified, and then the new programs, uh, there are fifteen new programs that are going to be undertaken by staff in the future to, mostly to promote fair housing. My only additional comments rev- um, are in regard to the response from the letter Department of Housing and Community Development that was sent on the thirteenth of July, sent to Director Rivas. In the attachment to that letter, um, the reviewers emphasized particularly, and we've, we've gone over the importance already of, um, the fair housing, the AFFH laws, but I just wanted to bring to your attention, um, the last statement, goals and actions. This, the reviewer emphasized that the, um, housing element needs to have metrics and milestones as appropriate to address, um, a, a lot of fair housing concerns. I won't, uh, read verbatim what the reviewer wrote. And the only thing that I would ask of the staff, if it's not, uh, an additional burden, would be to transfer, let's see, over, we, we have this, uh, we have our, our policy and then we have our background report wherein we have the, um, the programs described, uh, that are gonna be continued. And, um, just quickly, in the assessment written by the consultant, BAE, there're table fifteen, and let me, sorry, I lost my, um, marker for that.
Did you say D as in dog ate?
I'm sorry?
Did you say D as in dog ate or?
B.
B.
B, the, um, consultant's report, and I believe it is-
I think it's-
B eighty-four.
Page B eighty-four is table fifteen.
Okay, B eighty-four, I, okay. I'm going to direct the readers to table eighteen on B ninety-four, B as in boy, ninety-four, where they list the city's, uh, fair housing goals, policies, and programs that have been described in, uh, the implementation plan. And my only request is that, just to facilitate, uh, the review by, uh, the state, the DHC, and also to make it possibly a little more accessible to the public to, to understand the progress that, uh, the city is making, to more clearly state what's a, a metric and a milestone. And the reason I, I say that is that the reviewer said, actions must have metrics and milestones. So, to me, that was a, a flag, the state is very concerned about the progress that any jurisdiction is making. And, and I, um, I understand that they have a, a standard approach to these housing elements and, Placerville is a very small portion of the SECOG planning area and we have to keep that in mind. Still, if we can facilitate the review of our housing element and make it a little bit easier for the public to understand the progress that the city is making with their programs, I, I just think that benefits everyone. So, um, it's a, a mixed, mixed bag, um, in our implementation plan. I, I think, uh, the metrics and milestones in many cases are, uh, part of the title and so it's kind of inferred, but if there was a way to make those metrics a little more obvious or, not obvious, but make them stand out a little bit more so that in our future reviews, we can more quickly say, yes, you know, we made progress with a particular program or, uh, perhaps, uh, an outreach program wasn't targeted, uh, as specifically as it could have been and, and needs more improvement. That's the only comment I have. I think it's, uh, a very informational document, uh, very, uh, complete and tells so much about our, uh, community. Thank you.
All right, um, so I just had one question that I wanted to ask related to the public input that we did receive. So, it was their question or sort of comment on number five, page four dash seven, related to the fact that we do not allow room and board houses in Placerville. And so, I do know that we allow a single residency occupancy, which by understanding is six or more units, fundamentally the, the same thing, just more units. But we don't allow five or fewer units and I wanted to understand the rationale behind that.
Interesting, looking at the nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one, comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance, which was done immediately after the city adopted the general plan, the nineteen ninety general plan. Staff did look into this issue or question, um, specifically because the, the staff report and/or the housing element described that there currently are no zoning districts that permit that use. And so, we did look into that. What's interesting, you'll find interesting, is that in the nineteen sixty-three code that existed until the city did that comprehensive update in nineteen ninety-one, there were two zoning districts, actually, three, three zoning districts that permitted that use by right, two of which were multifamily zones. One of them was a commercial zone that doesn't exist anymore. What was clear after, actually, Director and I kind of looked at the, at the file, is there was some interplay between the planning commission and city staff prior to the commission offering a recommendation to City Council. Now, we do not know the reasons, I, I'm sorry, I can't give you the reason why they chose to, but apparently, there was one communication, communicate from the director at the time, who was summarizing in a memo, the changes that the planning commission recommended. And those changes clearly show on one of the pages, X across the enti- where, where they wanted things to be deleted. This was perhaps before, this was done on, well before word processing. So, this is the way they handled removing text that they didn't want. So, my point in saying that, it, there was some sort of discussion amongst the commission at the time to remove that use from the zone, not remove the, the definition, it's still in the code. But what we don't know is the reason why it was removed. We could speculate, Pierre and I could speculate what that may be based on the time, the timeframe. So, I don't have an answer for as to why, but clearly, there was direction by the commission at that time and then ultimately, council did adopt those changes. So, uh, it, it clearly, the definition clearly is five or fewer. Now, I could, I could tell you that under, under current housing law, if six, actually, six, six people who are unrelated to one another can live in a dwelling and the city would have to treat that as a, as a residence. We cannot regulate whether or not they're related or not, that can no longer be done. So, I don't know whether that had anything to do with it, I don't know if it dates back that far, but, uh, uh, there, there was a conscious decision to remove that use from, from the site, or from the, the zoning code. Now, Pierre and I have, have talked about that and, and because our definition uses the word lodging, clearly, that's a temporary type of a, a combination, it's not, that, otherwise, they would, perhaps used a different term, a different word.
Yeah.
Therefore, the city could certainly look at maybe those uses being permitted in zoning districts like commercial zones where lodging is allowed. That, I guess that would be our, well, go ahead.
Yeah, the only additional comments I would make is, um, I guess, and at least it was our conclusion that a boarding house is more of a commercial than a residential use. It's more of a lodging facility than providing a place for people to live. So, it's like a very much larger version of, say, a short-term rental would be, or a short-term rental, it could be, you know, one, the, it could be a studio apartment or, or a house, where usually, these boarding houses are large homes. Looking at the definition, basically, a boarding house is a house providing food and lodging for paying guests. Well, that's outside of the scope of what we're doing here in the housing element. And so, I think there could have been, and we tried to speculate, looking back in the past, why was it excluded? It could be, uh, because they're very, very difficult to regulate. It could be because if somebody owns a large house in a residential zone, then when, when does it become a boarding house? How does staff, uh, determine whether or not some guests are long-term guests, you know, greater than thirty days versus under thirty days? And then you get into the problem of defining a family, which, um, a court case in the past said we cannot do. It used to be that you could regulate the number of unrelated persons living in a house. Jurisdictions can't do that anymore. There is a relic in our, in our residential zones that said you're allowed to rent one room in your house. Well, if somebody rents a house that's four bedrooms, they can have additional roommates and the city can't regulate that. So, I think that's why the boarding house, uh, was removed, probably a number of reasons. But a boarding house, um, in, in, in relation to the comment we received, would be outside of the scope of the housing element. Because it's more of a, it's, it, it's sort of like a, a type of hotel or it's more like a, a larger bed and breakfast.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had, I had no other comments.
So, on, on that last note, on the bed and breakfast, um, and I, okay, here we are. Uh, page eight, goal E, this is in the, uh, addendum. This is one of the things that, uh, I know we're gonna change, that prohibit transit, short-term rentals in residential zones unless the unit is owner occupied. So, that gets us to the, this whole, we have bed and breakfast already, right? There's a lot of famous bed and breakfasts in, in town. And, and so, somebody lives there, right? The, the Airbnb, I, the term Airbnb, does that, it's really, is that really defined as the owner does not, is not present? I, I don't, because we have bed and breakfast, which is okay, but then there's this term Airbnb, which is, that's a company, frankly.
Yeah, bed and breakfast is different. I guess I, I would define a bed and breakfast as usually they're, they're a large house where the city allows them under our code. There's sixteen criteria that are, that's codified, that they have to meet, that the house must be historic as one and then it goes through a whole number and that the owner proprietor must live on the premises. And typically, even though the code doesn't explicitly say it, um, breakfast is provided to the guests. I've stayed in bed and breakfast, you know, many times in the past, I'm sure some of you have. I always got breakfast.
Yes.
I think when, and, and there was, the short-term rentals, I'll call them, uh, started in the Tahoe Basin, as our earlier speaker was talking about, before Airbnb. Airbnb and, and some of those other, um, platforms on the internet is just a substitute from when you used to advertise your short-term rental in the local newspaper. So, if some of you remember, I remember when Airbnb first came out and they would show a family, they would talk about the, the, the parents and their, their kids went away to school and they have this house now with extra rooms, what could they do? Well, you can bring people over from Europe and have that exchange of ideas and cultures and, and all of that sort of thing. Well, it became very lucrative then for investors to actually, uh, target, um, tourist destinations such as Lake Tahoe and you can buy a house and you can probably, uh, charge, uh, and get more money for renting it out on a weekend on a short-term basis than maybe you could renting it out, um, on, on a year-to-year basis or a month-to-month basis and, and pay your mortgage. And so, the way staff looks at this, and right now, we currently do not allow short-term rentals in single-family zones. It's, it's not allowed. Staff has been directed by council to come back with an ordinance to look at maybe allowing it in circum- certain circumstances. For example, um, in many cities, you'll have where, um, what was previously a residential area has gone commercial over time and you may have, you know, a relic house here or there. Well, if somebody owns a commercial property with a house on it, that could have a motel or hotel, then, you know, staff feels that, that would be appropriate for that then to be a short-term rental. So, we're gonna be putting together an ordinance, that ordinance will come before you and it's sort of separate from the housing element. The reason why we just have it in here is because the state has been really trying to, um, allow for the creation of ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And so, the state has been imposing a lot of requirements then on local jurisdictions to make them more affordable to build. And they're doing that by saying, you're gonna have to proportionally reduce impact fees and do a lot of other things like reduce development, uh, standards and, and the like. Well, we certainly wanna do that because I think, um, second residential units, granny flats or whatever you wanna call them, are a way of creating affordable housing. But we wanna give those incentives to people that wanna build housing, not lodging. And I think that's the reason why we're being a little more affirmative on that. Because it's a commercial use. And the commercial use shouldn't get the benefit then of reduction in fees to tie into the city's water system and sewer system and all of that to create a commercial kind of a situation as opposed to affordable housing.
And I will add to that, unfortunately, the state requires us to the, to the, to do the enforcement to ensure that it's not being rented as a short-term rental.
Right.
I think Pierre and I, I think I could speak for Pierre and, and he and I would, would both concur that we wish the legislature would do more and actually penalize somebody from doing that. Put it as a, uh, a violation of state law. Therefore, it may have more, um, disincentive imposed with that than perhaps a monetary sanction or something that we might be able to impose. But that likely would involve a lot, a lot more lobbying and, uh, perhaps other jurisdictions. We, we can't be in the same boat, I mean, I, with, uh, we can't be dissimilar to other jurisdictions who are, who have, have many more vacation rentals than we do or short-term rentals than we do. I can only imagine what they're going through during their housing element process where they are losing housing to, in a short-term way. And, you know, their workforce either has to commute longer distances to, to, to do the work that they do in the town. So, anyway, I'll, I'll stop talking.
Very quickly, uh, program twelve, I would like to go on record as saying I totally support the concept of the workforce housing and making that a priority. I think that's a benefit to the community, it's a benefit, uh, to the employers, it's a bit, just a benefit all the way around. So, really happy to see that in there. Then, on program eleven, senior housing- Then, on program eleven, senior housing, I, I just want to quibble a bit, if I may, on the logic. I'm looking in the discussion, and it's talking about, it says about the fourth, third line down, "Much of this growth will be the result of in-migration from the surrounding areas." And it goes down to say, we talk about people retiring, "Though many initially buy homes, the maintenance responsibilities may become too burdensome as they continue to age," granted, "and the households may offer smaller senior housing units, including assisted living complexes." So, but that's, to me, says, these people have got equity, they've got money, so I don't understand where we then go on to say, "The city will identify potential funding sources and work with nonprofits to facilitate development of affordable housing." Those aren't the people we need to be developing affordable housing for. They moved here, retired here, then they sold their home, and they, maybe they took their one-time exemption, then they have all this equity. I, I didn't like, I didn't like the logic in this. Certainly, I could agree that there probably needs to be the development of affordable senior housing, okay, but the, the logic of this, I, I didn't think, didn't tie well to me. So, and in terms of protecting city dollars, what we should, we should be seeking funding for, et cetera, it's not for people, you know? I'm getting close to that crowd, I think, you know? So, yeah, hey, I'll take the money, find me some funding. So, anyway, and that's really all I had. Really excited about the document. My approach frankly on this was, I looked for changes from the previous documents, kind of how I focused my review, as opposed to going through everything necessarily as, as much detail. And there were a few things. I'm, I'm looking forward to the implementation, because the devil is in the detail when the rubber meets the road, as it were. And thank you so much.
Sure, in, in response to that, yeah, the word affordable is, is a good qualifier. And I, I cannot recall whether or not we use that term in the, the new policy or the continued policy, to have to look it up. But in order for someone to qualify for financing, for affordability, they would have to show in their application to the state that either a percentage of or all of the units would have to be affordable. So the city necessarily wouldn't be advocating for, as you, as you're, you're, you mentioned those folks that are, or a development project for a market rate and above type of a complex. I think what this language is, is trying to assist, you know, affordable units, so actually, that term does make sense, and we, we will certainly, can certainly put that in there, if that helps to clarify.
No, my, my issue was just kind of the, the logic. I totally agree with the affordable. The scenario that you, you built, I don't think was the best scenario to justify. That's a minor quibble, just for that. So, Madam Chair, I believe there's action that we need to be taking on this.
Uh, yes, if anybody'd like to make a motion.
I'd be fall, I'd be willing to make the motion, that we forward a recommendation to the city council to approve an addendum to the twenty thirteen, twenty twenty-one general plan, housing element negative declaration for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine, housing element, and to adopt GPA twenty dash oh one, adopting a comprehensive update of the housing element of the city of Placerville general plan, making the findings as described on page seven of the staff report, one, A, B, and C, and incorporating the staff report as a matter of record.
I'll second.
I have a question. I don't think I heard you, clearly, you did include forwarding this to the city council?
Yes, I started off with that.
You started with, okay.
Yes. Well, I, I recommended the city council to approve, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Roll call vote, please, if there's no further questions, comments?
Member Friend?
Aye.
Member List?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gottberg?
Aye.
Member Keeney?
Aye.
I enjoyed the discussion.
So we are now moving on to new business. Do we have any new business to attend to?
Uh, no, we do not.
Okay, so then, moving on to matters from commissioners and staff, does staff have any items to report to us?
I do want to, or we need to let you know that the council will consider your recommendation on the fifth Tuesday of this month, which is the thirty-first. To, to ensure that if the council needs additional time to, for us to make changes to it, to a document that they need, that need, they need to adopt by September the twelfth, that's, that's the reason for the special meeting, because, because their regular meeting would be after that date. What this means for the planning commission is that, right now, we want to keep the Tuesday, the September seventh, availability of the city council to use this, this space here, their, their regular meeting location, should they need it. So what that means to you is that we will not have a meeting, the regular meeting for the planning commission, the first one in September, will not be, will not be held. Any questions about that? Okay. We do expect items for the second meeting. We are kind of pushing those projects, or holding them back, I guess would be the better term, until the, the housing element gets through its, its processes. So bear with us, and thank you. Director Revas, do you have any, anything to add?
Uh, just a couple items. The council at that special meeting on the thirty-first will be considering actually three items, so I was, it's always nervous when you try and get a special meeting for one thing. So they're going to be considering, I believe they're going to be considering the, it'll be the homeless camp that they're, that the city is looking at doing in concert with the county. It's a piece of property that's, actually, it's county property next to the county jail. And then the other item, I think, is the ARPA funding that the city is getting, one point something million dollars. So the city's going to be looking at how to spend that, that money. So those are the, actually, the three items the council will be considering on the thirty-first, if you're interested.
With regards to that first item and the, the homeless project, is that going to be supervised?
Yes.
It is going to be supervised?
It is going to be supervised.
Okay, that, that's excellent. I mean, I, I think this is just a, a great step.
Yeah, it's a managed camp.
I, I was wondering about that, I meant, I needed to ask.
Yeah.
I read that, that, that's terrific.
Yeah, it's basically a means of, you know, because of course, you know, the homeless, they, they are individuals with constitutional rights, and so it puts, it puts local governments in sort of a quandary of how to manage individuals where they're just, in a lot of different places, a lot of these places, we don't want them to be. For example, in, in environmentally sensitive areas like our creeks, we'd like to get them out of there, or on certain hillsides where it's not really advantageous to have a camp. So at least, this is a site that seems to be a little bit better located, where it will be managed. The whole concept is to try and assist these folks and get them out of homelessness, so. And that's sort of the program. I'm not personally, you know, heavily involved in it, but that's my understanding, and I hope it's a success, because we all know that the, the situation is, is dire out there, and, and all some of the, some of these fires that we have are due to the homeless camps, and, you know, threat of fire is very, I know, puts the fear in me, that's for sure. Let me see what else. Oh, I want to let you know that staff did receive, I would just call it a preliminary submittal of site plans and elevations for the, I would just call it the Gateway Hotel. It's going to have its own name. That's the one up there on, on Smith Flat, Point View Drive in Jake Way. So that'll be a boutique hotel, it'll be one of a kind, and so we're very excited about that. So once I, we take a good look at it, and we tell them it looks good to us, they're going to submit the formal application. And so that site plan review will come before you, and you'll get a chance then to take a look and, and hopefully approve a new hotel for, for the city. And the last thing I want to say, really, I just want, I just want to publicly comment, city planner Andrew Painter, and what was a Herculean effort. He managed this, this project, I think the whole staff had a hand on it, but this is primarily work, you see, of, of Mr. Painter, and I just want to publicly thank him for a tremendous amount of work here. The document is quite large, much bigger than the previous housing element, mainly because of the fair housing assessment and other requirements of the state on the city. But I think he handled it really, really well, including the comments with HCD, and hopefully, he'll have a feather in his cap, and he'll have a certified housing element. So thank you, Andrew. And thank you, Commissioner.
Well played, sir, well played.
On, on that regard, thank you very much. On that regard, we, I think we mentioned to some of you when you arrived today, that if you, if you notice some typos and things like that, that always get overlooked, if you could just jot those down, email those to us. Those aren't substantive changes, they're just, you know, we can mention one that most of you already know about, I, I'll refrain, but unless Director Revas wants us to mention it. We, we, well, we might as well do it. We, we misspelled the mayor's name. We misspelled the mayor's name. So he has yet to comment on that, and so I want to let you know that we, we went down to the courthouse, and we legally changed his name back from, from Donnis to, back to Dennis. So he should be, he'll give us a thank you for that. We will certainly make that correction before it goes in front of them in a couple of weeks. So thank you for your time tonight, thank you for the public, their input during the questionnaires during COVID was, was essential. We kind of wish maybe we, we could have had more activities for them to get involved with, but we are, what we, who are here, we're, we're here because of, of a lot of factors, and, and thank you for your time tonight. Thank you, members of the public, if you're out there, we appreciate your time. You certainly have the ability to comment at the council level, so if those of you were not able to come tonight, you certainly can do that, express your opinion, get yourself on record, and thank you.
Come on, folks, he's looking for the criticism, he wants the challenge.
Are, are there any matters from commissioners?
I have none.
Nope. All right. I call adjournment of the August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission at eight oh three.
Well played, Madam Chair.